Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Welcome. And we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military, at home and abroad, and for their families? Thank you. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Here.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Yes.
Counselor Mackin? He will not be attending this evening. Counselor Maglio? Here. Counselor O'Brien? Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Ringus?
Here.
Counselor Ryan?
There.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Samino. We do have a counselor participating remotely this evening, so all votes will be by roll call. And we will start off with announcements. I want to make sure everyone knows the 5K to Braintree Day, the Fun Run Walk, and Kids' Race will be held on Sunday, June 19th, 2022. Kids' Race starts at 9:15 and the Adults' Race starts at 10:00. Starts and finishes right here at Town Hall. It's a great day getting the town prepared for Braintree Day the following Saturday. You can sign up at runsignup.com. The other announcement I have is the Crafts and Vendor Market at 74 Pond Street. The next one will be held on Saturday, June 11th. So if you haven't had a chance to check that out, it's a great event, great use of the space, and I'm sure everyone will enjoy it. Any other announcements this evening? Counselor Hume?
I just want to invite or remind everybody that this Sunday, June 12th, is Firefighter Sunday. Ceremony will be held at the fire headquarters at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Counselor Hume. Counselor Reynolds?
I just want to... Just to remind the citizens and the counselors that coming up on June 29th, Wednesday, the Super Saturdays organization will be holding their annual golf tournament to raise money for the program.
Great, thank you. Counselor Maglio?
I just wanted to give a quick thanks to everyone who was part of the Braintree Pride flag raising on Saturday, a thank you to the mayor's office, to the counselors who were able to attend, and also to Braintree Pride, which was launched as part of now flying a flag to celebrate diversity and inclusion and acceptance. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Maglio. Counselor Ringus?
Thanks, Clerk Barica. I just wanted to say a thank you to all those who participated in the planning and execution of the high school graduation this past Saturday. It was a phenomenal day. The weather held great for the kids. Congratulations to the class of 2022. As always, it was a great ceremony. We had Superintendent Lee, who actually quoted Beyonce and Taylor Swift in his closing remarks. So it was quite a great day for the kids.
Thank you, Counselor Ringus, for that. And here, here, to the class of 2022, for sure. Any other announcements this evening? All right, we will move on to the approval of minutes for March 15th, 2022.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Clerk Samino? Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Yes, aye, sorry.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much, Clerk Samino. I do want to recognize with us this evening Chief of Staff Taub, Director of Finance, Ed Spillman, Director of Planning, Melissa Santucci-Razi. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. I know you've all worked all day, and we appreciate your presence here tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to old business. We have three town council orders. They're all public hearings, so what we're going to do is they're all going to be opened and they're all going to be continued. So there are very specific guidelines for the timing around opening a public hearing. The Inclusionary Housing Zoning Amendment is still with the planning board. The other two are working their way through the committee process, so none of these items are ready to come before the council for a public hearing this evening. Unless any counselor objects, I'd like to recommend we take these up with one vote. I'll read all of them and then continue them with one vote as well. Any concerns? Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to open the public hearing for the following three orders? 22012, Mayor, zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing and associated revisions, or take up any action relative thereto? That will be continued to July 12th, 2022. 22015, Citizen Petition, zoning ordinance text amendments, proposed amendment Article 18, medical and adult use or non-medical marijuana establishments and related amendments to Section 135-601 and 135-806, or take up any action relative thereto? That public hearing will be continued to July 12th. 22037, Town Council President, tree protection ordinance, or take up any action relative thereto? That public hearing will be continued to July 12th.
Motion to open the public hearing for Order 22012, 22015, and Order 22037. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much, Clerk Samino. All right, now we will say, is there a motion to continue the public hearing to July 12th, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. for the following three orders? 22012, Mayor, zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing and associated revisions, or take up any action relative thereto? To be continued to July 12th, 2022. 22015, Citizen Petition, zoning ordinance text amendments, proposed amended Article 18, medical and adult use or non-medical marijuana establishments and related amendments to Section 135-601 and 135-806, or take up any action relative thereto? Continued to July 12th, 2022. 22037, Council President, tree protection ordinance, or take up any action relative thereto? Continued to July 12th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us through those procedural motions. All right, moving on, we are going to now cover 22029, Mayor, Request for Appropriation, CPA Appropriation Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project, Supplemental Funds Request, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto? This is also a public hearing. We're going to go through this one. So is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order 22029?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. So the public hearing has been opened, and I am now going to refer to Chairman Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for that committee's recommendation on Order 22029.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means met and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on Order 22029.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on this?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Nice to see everybody tonight. And if I may, just offer my congratulations to those members of the council, including Clerk Ringus and Clerk Samino, who had family members graduate on Saturday. It was really nice to be able to be there and celebrate that with you. I think that's a real testament to your parenting and kind of family upbringing that we give to our young people. So really, congratulations to you on that. But to the matter at hand, as folks might remember, back in November of 2021, and I think final vote that occurred in December, we presented the mayor's plan to purchase a restriction on 19 of the units at the Windjammer Cove properties that upon completion will allow us to count all 73 units of the property in our subsidized housing inventory. The original plan to fund our portion of the agreement was to utilize funds, Community Preservation Act funds, Turtle Crossing 40B settlement funds, and some support from home funds, which is an application process. So we previously approved just over $993,856 in CPA funds and just over $1 million in those 40B funds. And those orders, I believe, were provided to the council with the memo. Despite our best efforts and further consideration and review of the availability of the home funds, the determination was made that it would be more appropriate to fund the outstanding balance of $153,185 left for the town's share of the agreement through a further appropriation of Community Preservation Act funding, specifically the Community Housing Fund. And so that is the request. That is before the council this evening. And I do believe we have just been joined with a representative from Windjammer Cove. So with his presence, and thank you very much for being here, and Director Santucci-Razi, we are certainly happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Taub. With that, are there any questions from the counselors? Any comments? Okay. I would like to add that I will definitely be supporting this tonight. I don't think we can overstate how important it is to make sure we have affordable housing options in town for our residents, and I will be looking forward to seeing this project come to fruition and completion. So very happy to support the final component of funding for this to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. With that...
Motion to close the public hearing for Order 22029.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Motion to close? Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. And now, is there a motion for Order 22029?
Yes. Motion that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44B of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the total appropriation of $153,185 from the Community Housing Fund to fund a portion of the costs associated with the memorandum of understanding that details the requirements for the Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project Assessors Map 3007 Part II. Said fund shall be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. All right, congratulations on that. Looking forward to the update. All right, moving on to 22038, Mayor, CPA Appropriation, Request for Appropriations, Smelt Brook Restoration Study, or take up any action relative thereto? This is also a public hearing, so is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order 22038?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. All right, thank you very much. All right, with that, I will refer to Chairman Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for their recommendation on Order 22038.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means met this evening and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council for Order 22038.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak? Thank you. Chief of Staff Taub?
Hello again. Also joining us this evening are several representatives from Pond Meadow Park, our partner in this project, including Michael Ricciardi, Breon Keith, and Frank Collins. So I want to thank them for joining us, not only at the full council, but also before the committee earlier this evening. So this project dates back, I think, to at least 2015, but the first funding appropriation made by this body was in October of 2018. And that was what really kicked off the Smelt Brook Restoration Study for a total of $65,000, being Braintree's share. The town of Waymouth matched that appropriation, and then we also received $131,000 in federal match funding to support the project. We are in the final phases of that feasibility study, and its determination has been made that we need an additional appropriation in order to get us to the finish line. And that includes finishing the environmental review, detailed project reports, and also completing an environmental assessment for the preferred alternative, which has been described as effectively a ladder system, which is very much what it sounds like. I saw a picture this evening and can certainly share one with the council if you're so interested in order to move into the final design and construction phase. So what we'd be looking for this evening is authorization for an appropriation of $15,000 from the CPA Unreserved Fund to complete this portion of the study, with the expectation that the town of Waymouth will be matching that appropriation, and then there will be a total match of $30,000 in federal funding for a total of $60,000 to complete this stage of the process. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the council on this? Counselor Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. When, has Braintree already voted on their share? I mean, sorry, Waymouth already voted on their share?
Waymouth has not formally appropriated the additional $15,000. We had some discussion earlier this evening that that is in process, and the understanding is that this will not move forward without that 50-50 split between the two communities.
Okay, all right. And I just, we don't get many opportunities to thank our volunteers and the community, so thank you so much for your dedication to Pond Meadow and all that. Greatly appreciated, and thank you for being here. I know everybody's busy, so that means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hume. Anyone else have questions?
I have a question on this. So after, what's the timeline? If this funding gets appropriated, then what? What is the next step to, and this is in Pond Meadow Park, if I understood correctly? Yes.
So my understanding is that, what's that? It's not Pond Meadow Park.
It's not. This is actually down by the Smelt Brook on Brookside.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, not in the park proper, just for orientation. Thank you.
My understanding is that the work on the feasibility component continues, but they've identified the need for the additional funding in order to bring that to completion. Once that gets completed, I think that there's further application with the Army Corps of Engineers that's required in order to continue moving the project forward.
So are we talking years, months? Do we have, I'm only wondering, because when I was reading the report, it sounded like there was some dire environmental, or there was an urgency from an environmental standpoint, and this is already seven years old?
I'm not certain as to what the timeline for completion would be on the project. What I do know, it was reaffirmed earlier, that the work does continue, and so assuming or presuming that we can get the match from Waymouth as well as the appropriation tonight, that would just allow us to keep the momentum going and keep us moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. I want to thank the folks that are working on this as well. This is a great project for not only the town of Braintree, but the town of Waymouth and our region.
Beautiful.
It's something that, you know, years and years ago, the fish would run up Smelt Brook, and the fish would run all the way to the reservoir, and, you know, and there's some man-made obstructions in the way now up at the dam. But my friend that I went to Mass Maritime with, Kyle Palowski, has been working on this for a very, very long time. And Kyle is with, he lives in Waymouth, and he's with the Four River Watershed Association. So they've been working on this a very long time. I'm really happy to see folks here that are continuing this good work to get this done. It's something that's very appropriate for the use of community preservation funds. It's exactly what they should be used for, and I fully support this. I would love to have you folks come back maybe at a later meeting and give us a presentation on, when you have a more of an update and a plan that maybe could include a schedule and a timetable, as the president's asked about. So I will fully be supporting this. I'm sure everybody's going to fully support this, but I wanted to just mention some of the, my friend Kyle Palowski that was working on this for a long time. He's done it, he's been very dedicated on this, so I wish he was here tonight, too. I'm probably going to call him when I leave the meeting tonight and tell him we voted on the money. So thank you very much for your work. I appreciate it.
And if I may, Madam President, just thank you to Director Santucci-Razi. So some key upcoming dates within anticipated schedules, we would be looking to have approval of the feasibility study and the proposed plan in January of '23, and then we would be looking to execute agreements for design and construction in May of '23.
Great.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Ryan, for that. We would love to have you back at a future date with updates. That would be fantastic. Any other counselors have questions or comments? Okay, are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. We will, do we have a motion to close the public hearing for Order 22038?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. To close the public hearing? Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. And now, is there a motion for Order 22038?
Yes. That in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44B of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of $15,000 from the CPA Unreserved Fund for the Smelt Brook Restoration Study 2022 Addendum Assessors Map 3005 Part 25, conditional on the funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Look forward to the project getting underway. All right, moving on to 00622, Council President, Town Council Rules, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto? This is for Rule 61, Adoption of Rules. This is not a public hearing. Turn it over to Counselor Ringus of the Committee of Ordinance and Rules for their recommendation.
Thank you, President Barica. The Committee on Ordinance and Rules had met initially on March 28th. We recommended a favorable action to the full council, which included some amendments to the Town Council rules. There was a vote of three in favor, one opposed as an amendment to Rule Number 8, and four in favor, a unanimous recommendation as an amendment to Rule Number 38. Of note, when this was pushed forward to the council on April 5th, Counselor O'Brien referred back to the Committee on Ordinance and Rules an amendment to Town Council Rule 33. ONR did meet on this proposed amendment and voted unanimously to send it back with an unfavorable recommendation to the full council on Town Council Rule 33. So we will be looking at each of those proposed amendments tonight, and then voting on each of them, and then the Town Council rules as a whole.
Thank you, Counselor Ringus. Very good. So let's start then with Rule Number 8. Counselor Flaherty, do you want to?
I propose an amendment to Town Council Rule Number 8. The rule currently states, Rule 8, Committee Appointments. The Council President shall appoint all members of all committees of the Town Council, whether special or standing. Appointments are subject to Rule 3, appeals from decision of the President. The amendment is to strike the last sentence, which is what is in parentheses. It says, "Appointments are subject to Rule 3, appeals from decision of the President." Would essentially restore power of the President to have authority to determine committees, members.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the proposed rule then would read, or the amendment would then read, the Council President shall appoint all members of all committees of the Town Council, whether special or standing. Are there any remarks, or would any counselor like to speak on this? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend Counselor Flaherty for this proposed rule change. I agree with her. Having been on the council when this was changed, I didn't agree with it then, and I think it was really sour grapes by someone who didn't want, the person they wanted to be President didn't get elected President, so they thought they'd try to undermine the new President. And it's not appropriate, really. And I think that if you don't like the things that the President's doing, vote the President and the council out. Don't try to undermine their appointments to committees. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Hume?
Madam President, well said, Counselor Ryan, and I totally agree with Counselor Flaherty. This was put in two years ago. I was the sitting president at the time, did not agree with it then, don't agree with it now, so I will be supporting her amendment.
Any other, Counselor Flaherty?
The reason I think the amendment is important is because in most councils, it would not be an issue. But if you had a particularly contentious council, then what you have is the ability But if you had a particularly contentious council, then what you have is the ability for a certain amount of jockeying to, um, to appoint members of two committees or remove them, depending on how you wish for any given vote from the committee to be made, whether to secure a favorable recommendation or to prevent one. And I think that that is not in the spirit of the business that we do in this council. And so that is why I think the amendment needs to be made.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Any other, Counsel Ringus?
So I was the person that voted, um, against amending this. Um, this was proposed two years ago. This did come up. Um, I just, as sort of a historical perspective, two year, we were supposed to review the Town Council rules every two years, basically. Whenever we swear in a, a new council and reorganize, we are supposed to look at the council, the council minutes. Um, without looking back at prior councils, I think, um, a lot of times it was one of those mechanisms that just kind of, it just kind of flunked through. There wasn't, there wasn't always a thorough review. Um, the council, uh, the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, two years ago, we started it right before this thing known as COVID was going to sort of shut some things down, and then we sort of, and with some live meetings, and then we continued through with, I think, the first Zoom meetings that I participated on, was we did a real thorough review, uh, Counsel Flaherty served on that, uh, committee with me, of each and every rule, to the point where we, we were adjusting semicolons, we were adjusting periods, we were moving rules. There was paragraphs underneath certain rules that didn't match up with what they said. We truly, we took out some rules. There was some rules that had been added in over time that were more in resolution form as opposed to the plan language of the rules we write them. So it was, I think, fair to say, the most thorough revamping of the rules that we had ever done. Um, I did not propose this rule at the time. Uh, it was, it was proposed by a different counselor. Um, ultimately, it went through the subcommittee. It came back to the full council and it was approved. Um, I can understand the feeling that it could cause sour grapes or can cause contentiousness. But I think what it is also is a firm check and balance on power, and I think it's something that's important. We have various mechanisms within our rules to ensure that there, the President, that no one member of the council has sort of unchecked power. For example, if a President did not want to call a meeting on a certain topic, the council can come together in a majority fashion to have a meeting called on whatever topic that they might want called. And that's sort of the check and balance on a, a President who didn't want to necessarily call a meeting on a particular subject. What we have here is the ability to sort of take a look at committee appointments. It's not taking away the power of a President to appoint members of the committee. It's just allowing us a check and a balance on those appointments. And I think when you, I, I could kind of piggyback on the comment that Counsel Flaherty made in terms of if you have a contentious council. Well, it could go the other way. You could have a contentious council where perhaps the President had personal issue, personal beef with someone, and maybe didn't put someone on the committee that perhaps all the other counselors thought that they should be on. To use examples here with folk, folks, we have obviously, uh, Counsel Reynolds is someone, the, the only veteran that we have on the council. So obviously, someone like Counsel Reynolds should serve on our Veterans Affairs Committee. Someone like Counsel Ryan, who's, who's positioned in his, his, his day job, if you will, is to work with, with water and so it should obviously be on our DPW committee. So I think it is an important power to make sure that sometimes those things get done in the correct manner. The other thing I say, whenever we sort of look at these rules, because this rules that apply to the mayor's office, this rules that apply to individual counselors, one always has to look at these things at, not with the personalities that are currently in the seats, but in essence, in terms of faceless persons that might sit in this role. And so I think it's important, because again, right now, we could probably say that this rule has been in existence since January. Well, actually, it's been, for two and a half years it's been in existence. It was never used under the prior council. Despite there being some contentiousness on that council, it was never used. We've had all these committees in place since January. For now, six months, these committees have been in place. So I highlight, and the rule existed that entire six months. No one made any motion to try to change any of the committees. So I don't see that all of a sudden we're gonna, someone's gonna say, now that the rule still exists, that we're gonna, we're gonna all of a sudden go and do that, because they had the ability to do that for the last six months, and they didn't. So basically, where no one's used it, we can assume that no one's going to use it now, and these committees will stay for the next year and a half. So I think it, it's, it's looking forward to the future, because we don't know who's going to sit in that seat or that seat or this seat or this seat or these three seats in two years. And I think having the spirit of that rule, that no one counselor has the ability to go unchecked in any sort of powers they hold, is an important one. And so that's why I would be in favor of keeping the rule as is, so that we can continue to have appeals of certain issues that might, might occur.
Thank you, Counsel Ringus. Any other counselor wish to speak on this? Okay. I will add, I will be supporting Counsel Flaherty's amendment this evening, um, as the President is elected by his or her peers, or his peers. Um, and my recollection, that was a very thorough overview of the rules two years ago, uh, Counsel Ringus, uh, is that Roberts Rules, which we tend to follow, also prescribe, uh, the amendment as, or the, the rule as Counsel Flaherty has proposed it. And I think that is a, a solid basis on which to base our own, our own rules as, as a council. All right, so no other comments? Okay, so as, and thank you, um, thank you, Counsel Ringus. So we're gonna vote on each amendment, and then at the end, we're gonna vote on the en, the entire thing as amended. So with that, is there a motion to amend the Town Council Rule number eight as stated by Counsel Flaherty?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
No.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
That's six in favor, two opposed, one absent.
The motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Clerk Simino. All right, moving on to Rule number thirty-eight, Proposed Amendment. I have an amendment I would like to propose, so I'm going to step down as Council President for a moment to do that. I propose an amendment to Rule number thirty-eight. That rule currently reads, the community, Standing Committees, the Community Planning Committee may consider and report upon all matters relating to short-term planning and community renewal projects, as well as long-term community planning and visioning. The amendment is to include additional text at the end of Rule thirty-eight, which adds and issues of sustainability and the environment. Um, my amendment is really, at, at the beginning of the year, as I was making the committee appointments, I was struck that we do not have any, we had no, we have no committee that has issues of the environment or sustainability in its distinct purview. So this change would allow the council to have a standing committee that more formally can take up these pressing, I would say, ever-present issues of sustainability and the environment, and really help provide, um, information and oversight on them. So I, I believe they're critically important. I hope my colleagues will join me in that and asking for support in making this amendment. So the proposed new amendment would read, the community, Rule thirty-eight, Standing Committees, the Community Planning Committee may consider and report upon all matters relating to short-term planning and community renewal projects, as well as long-term community planning and visioning, and issues of sustainability and the environment. I will now step back up as Council President. Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Stop for a minute, I was going to get to talk as Council President, but she stepped right, she stepped right back into that seat pretty quickly. I'm just kidding. So I, I want to commend the Council President, um, you know, issues of sustainability and the environment of, of vital importance to the town of Braintree. We have to make sure that we're doing our part on the Town Council. So I fully support this. I would think as, um, the Chairman of the Department of Public Works Committee, sometimes we might be looking at issues of sustainability in the environment as well, but the more we look at things, the better. So I fully support this and want to thank the Council President.
Counsel Ringus?
Supportive of this at our Ordinance and Rules meeting as well. I think it was a, a proper change. There was some discussion about perhaps, uh, creating a, another committee that might look at this, but I think when we looked at the number of committees we have and when they meet and don't meet, it made a lot more sense. And I think the amendment that you proposed as to including this in a already existing standing committee was the right way to go. And even though I just, in my argument, said we should always look at it as faceless folks, the fact that we have Counsel Maglio in this position, I think, is, is wonderful, and I know that she will use, uh, her position on that committee, uh, to make sure that we're looking at a very important issue.
Any other comments? All right, do we have a motion to amend Town Council Rule number thirty-eight as stated?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the third amendment proposed, that is to Town Council Rule number thirty-three by Counsel O'Brien. Clerk Simino, did Counsel O'Brien want to read?
No, he's off set.
All right, so I'll read the proposed amendment, um, on, and again, to echo Counsel Ringus, uh, recap on April fifth, twenty-twenty-two, the Town Council meeting, Counsel O'Brien made a motion to refer this back to O-N-R, to Ordinance and Rules. Um, so the existing Rule thirty-three is the Agenda Request from Other Town Departments. Existing reads, all items for the agenda, including communications and reports from the mayor, other town officers, and the town board, shall be submitted to the town clerk's office and to the clerk of the council no later than ten a.m. on Thursday preceding the regular council meeting. A copy of said report and agenda shall be delivered to the council no later than Friday preceding the regular council meeting. No meeting shall be filed without all supporting documentation. Late items require a two-thirds vote of the members of the Town Council to be allowed at the council meeting. Any item authorized for the agenda must be specified on the agenda by whom it is introduced. The proposed amendment reads, all items for the agenda, including referrals, communications, and reports from the mayor, other town officers, and town board, shall be submitted to the town clerk's office and the clerk of the council no later than ten a.m. on Wednesday preceding the regular council meeting. No measure shall be filed without all supporting documentation. In accordance with open meeting law, a copy of the reports and agenda shall be delivered to the council members forty-eight hours in advance of the regular council meeting. Late items require a two-thirds vote of council members to be considered. Any item authorized for the agenda must be specified on the agenda by whom it is introduced. Would any counselor like to speak on this? Counsel Ringus, please.
Uh, we did, um, remeet on this particular issue, um, and, uh, Chief of Staff Tob, uh, from the mayor's office was present at the meeting as well. Um, we did unanimously vote, um, for an unfavorable recommendation, uh, as to this measure. Um, when you really, when you break it down, and I'm sure people listening at home are like, that sounds almost the exact same. Um, the, the two big changes were, um, from Friday to Wednesday, um, that is actually the biggest, the biggest changes, the Friday to the Wednesday. And I think, not speaking for the other members, but I think the sort of, the consensus was, at least in my personally, too, was, we all get frustrated sometimes if we don't have some of these things ahead of time. We, we would like to ask counselors to do our job as thoroughly as possible, so we want to see these things before us, as soon as we can get them, so we can digest them, create our questions, and be ready for our meetings. We're also cognizant of the fact, though, that sometimes things just come up, and sometimes deadlines get proposed that we just can't, you know, especially when, you know, coming from the school committee, the FBA might have certain guidelines that have to be hit, and we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're not voting on something that has a firm deadline with the state because of this rule. So although we, I think, from a, again, from a consensus, we did speak with the mayor's office, make, and ask, again, as we've asked in the past, to make sure things are delivered in as timely as the manner as possible, we didn't want to put ourselves into a situation where we handcuffed ourselves into a Wednesday date and had needed two-thirds vote later. So, um, I would, I was supportive of the unfavorable recommendation and of keeping the existing language of the Friday.
Thank you for that, Counsel Ringus. Appreciate the explanation. Counsel Ryan and then Counsel Hume.
Thank you. Um, at the, uh, Ordinance and Rules, uh, meeting, I, uh, I voted against this, and I think that the, uh, current language in Rule thirty-three is, 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 works. I don't think we need the, to change, uh, for the, the proposed amendment. And I think, um, you know, you, you look at how the council does business, we get the majority of the items from the mayor's office that go on our agenda, and the mayor's office does the best they can to get the information to us in a timely manner. Is the mayor's office perfect? Nicole, the mayor's office is not perfect. And sometimes we don't get everything, you know, right away, and, you know, I think we have to, you know, work together and be, um, you know, tr, try to help each other. So I don't think putting more restrictive, um, language in this, uh, this proposed rule is going to help anybody. I think, uh, you know, Counsel Reynolds used to sit up in that office, and he was the chief of staff, and, you know, sometimes it's better to just get things on the council radar, and the information's coming. I think what we always have in our back pocket is, we don't need to act on anything until we have all the information. And I've never been really put in a situation where, uh, the mayor or the chief of staff is saying, vote on this now, even though you don't have all the information, vote on it now. So we can get the information, we can get things on our radar screen, we can do things in a timely manner. We don't need to handcuff people and put more restrictive requirements in our rules. I think things work pretty well now, and, uh, I think we should stick with, uh, what we have. So I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Counsel Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I also voted against this in Ordinance and Rules. Um, I concur with, uh, Counsel Ryan on this. And the spirit, in my opinion, of this rule when it was put forth was on subcommittees. We, uh, all the business that comes before us as a full council gets referred to a subcommittee. So it's put on the agenda to refer it. Not all documents are known when it's referred, and when you're the chair of a subcommittee, if you don't have all the documents, you, you don't meet. That's your right not to meet as a chair of a subcommittee. Uh, and one thing that's not been discussed, we all have lives outside the council, outside of Town Hall. We have families, things happen, life happens, things get in the way, emails may not go out, um, you know, work is in the way, things like that. So, uh, uh, I know that mayor's office does do the best that they can, um, in getting us the information, and we always do get the information, and we don't take up votes unless we have all the documents we need to take the vote. That would be, um, irresponsible of as a council. Residents put us in this place to make informed decisions based on the information, um, and asking questions. So, um, I, I am comfortable that we receive all the information we do, and if I'm not, I either, one, I won't hold a meeting on a subcommittee that I'm part of, or we don't hold a vote. And I know in previous, um, councils, other than the council here, we haven't taken a vote on things because we didn't have the documents for the reasons Counsel Ryan said. So I'm not going to support this. I think the rules stand as it is, should stand as it is, and the more details you get into your governing procedures, the more you can put yourself into a, a corner. So, um, I'm going to leave it as is, and I'm not supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hume. Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. So I know that I had seconded this motion by Counsel O'Brien, um, back, I think it was a few months ago. Um, and, um, I felt that it was a legitimate topic for discussion. Um, and that didn't mean that I was making a decision on that, that evening. However, uh, I have time to think about this, and there were, there are a few different things at that time that I was waiting on for information, uh, from the mayor's office that, uh, I'll just state that I was just a little frustrated with. Uh, but having the opportunity to watch the Ordinance and Rules, uh, committee meetings, um, I think that Counsel Ringus put it best, um, in the way that he summarized, uh, the differences and, um, really, the particulars, um, about our abilities to get the job done. Um, after the discussion was completed, I felt that the best decision was to vote against the amendment, and I know that a couple of the other, uh, counselors here have also offered some very legitimate, um, uh, poignant, pointed, uh, examples. So I thank them for that as well.
Thank you, Counsel Reynolds. Any else? I'll just add one other thing, um, and echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and it's, it's notable that this also applies to counselors and residents. So if we want to get something on the agenda, we need to make sure we get all of our documents in and it's submitted in a timely fashion. And the same thing for if there is citizen concern, they need to meet the same deadlines. And it's just one day, but it's a big difference, it does make a big difference, I think, and we want to make it as easy, and thank you for the, the esprit de corps, Counsel Ryan, as easy as possible for all of us, residents, the mayor's office, and counselors, to get the business of the town done. So I also will not be voting in favor of this evening, and I'm happy with the existing rule as it stands. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to amend Town Council Rule number thirty-three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, we have to, yes, second.
Okay. Uh, Clerk Simino, oh, thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk?
So I just made a motion so we can vote on it and put it to rest.
Yes, yep, thank you. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Counsel Berica?
No.
Counsel Flaherty?
No.
Counsel Hume?
No.
Counsel Maglio?
No.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds? Counsel Ringus? Counsel Ryan?
No.
One in favor, seven opposed, one absent.
The motion fails. Okay, so now we have the final vote for the Town Council Rules as amended. Is there a motion to adopt the Town Council Rules as amended? Is there a motion to adopt the Town Council Rules as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Aye.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Nay.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
That's seven in favor, one opposed, one absent.
Two opposed.
I apologize.
The motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for all the work on that. Appreciate it, and the thoughtful conversation. All right. Moving on to new business. We have no new business this evening, so with that, I'll ask Counselor Ryan for motions to refer to committees.
Refer to the Committee on Ways and Means, 22034. Mayor, authorization to enter into tri-town water district joint powers agreement or take up any action related thereto. So moved.
Second. Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. As always, thank you so much to our team from B-CAM, Wes Ray, Bill Needham, and Jerry Comack, and your entire crew for always being available for all of our meetings. We are grateful. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Before we adjourn, could I just briefly, I just wanted to put out there for folks that on, it'll be the day after our next council meeting, but on Wednesday, June 22nd, the Subcommittee on Ordinance and Rules will be meeting here in Cahill Auditorium at 6:00 p.m. The sole topic of that evening will be proposed changes to zoning regarding cannabis and its cultivation within the town. I know that's an issue that has obviously two sides to it. I think there's a lot of people that have some commentary that they'd like to make on that. So that meeting will allow for public comment on the issue. People can appear live and state their opinions here at the mic. Also, we know that some folks are still cognizant of COVID and don't want to be in a group setting, so it will be an option. The meeting will be streamed, again, by B-CAM. Folks will have the ability to text in to one of the clerk's numbers, and their questions and or comments can be read into the record. So there's two options to comment. I just want to get, have that out there so people can start to get it in their calendar, because I am sure there's some people that want to get out and comment on that. So thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Councilor Ringus. I appreciate that. All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
All in favor to adjourn.
Thank you.